It is now five o'clock, July 11th, 2017. And I call to order a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Accessory Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I do have one card, and we are limited to three minutes per individual. The person that I have is Craig Garcia.
I just had a couple of questions. In regards to the recusal of Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Cox for the Green Tree motion, why was that done?
On the basis of the attorney's, on the better to be safe. And I'll let him explain it because he's the one that made the ruling.
There are FPPC rules that would deem an individual to have a conflict of interest if they have property located actually within 500 feet of whatever the subject matter of the decision is. In this case, both council members live on the golf course, that per FPPC rules is deemed to be potentially a conflict of interest. Even though there may not be directly a conflict of interest, the FPPC considers that to be a conflict of interest. The theory being that any decision, if they were involved in a decision on the golf course, it may have the effect of increasing the value or decreasing the value of their residences. That's the theory.
So their association with Green Tree was the reason for the recusal?
Correct. They're having residences on the Green Tree, adjacent to the Green Tree Golf Course that could be affected by any decision.
The reason I brought up associations is because Blanca has associations with the High Desert Cannabis Program, the association, right? I was wondering if there's any legal connection that way also?
That probably is not directly a conflict. It depends what the association is, but here it's the potential of a financial interest. If Councilmember Gomez had a financial interest in that entity, that'd be a different story. Here, the fact is their residences could be impacted by the value of, you know, the value of the property could be affected by any decision on the golf course.
But you did mention the potential of the value. You didn't say that potentially should, it might not be true.
It may not be true. Nevertheless, FPPC would basically rule you have a potential conflict, therefore you may be biased, you should not participate in that decision.
So do you know what, to what degree Ms. Gomez is associated with the High Desert Cannabis Program?
I do not, I do not know her association or degree of her association.
I did have another question. Drawing a blank. Oh, I didn't come to last month's meeting. I've seen it online. I was watching on TV on my computer. I was embarrassed. I was sitting there by myself, watching it with my wife, and I was embarrassed. We moved here in 2000. I've raised three boys, three young men now that have business of their own.
Go to the microphones.
I'm sorry. I used to be a football coach, so I used to holler at them. We moved here in 2000. We wanted to make, I told my wife quite honestly, I tell you, this is where I'm gonna die. I heard some things in the meeting last month that just bothered the heck out of me, you know? And a lot of it has to do with this cannabis thing.
That's three minutes, sir.
I'll ask for a little bit more time, since there's nobody else.
I'll give you additional time.
And last month, you had a couple people up here just wasting your time.
I'll give you two more minutes.
Thank you. I was really upset at the subject matter, but I was also upset and disappointed in you guys. You let this thing get into a circus out here. You had people coming up one after the other, talking about the same crap. They threatened your jobs. I respect this chamber. I respect the people that sit in those chairs. But what I seen last month was a total embarrassment. Nobody took control of anything. I mean, there were people in this chamber that should have been removed. Their behavior was appalling. And Blanca, most of them came in regards to an argument you had, and you didn't say anything. So I was kinda disappointed in all of you, that rules of order weren't recognized. People were not removed or asked, even, even your, I think you called to order it once, maybe twice. But the rest of the meeting, gosh, you guys were here till 11 o'clock. And there was no control. No control at all. I've conducted meetings when I was with Little League and Junior All-American Football as a president. I know the rules of order. This was not a meeting, this was a circus. These people are arguing, threatening your jobs, telling you guys to go on the community. I've seen you all in the community. I've seen you at the boxing matches. You guys went to my son's grand opening. I've seen you out there. I know you're doing your jobs, but they threaten you for your job? Come on, you guys worked too hard for that. I was just embarrassed. I was embarrassed by myself. I was embarrassed for the chamber, for all those people that are out here screaming bloody murder. The reason they didn't see you is because they were probably all stoned. I'm just trying to be honest. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that.
Am I welcome to state floor?
Thank you. Now we can have a declaration of closed session items by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We only have one item this evening. It is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 54957B, and the position title is city manager. To the extent there's a reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session.
Very well. At this time now, we will recess to our closed session.
Well, before we recess, I need to comment on public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.
Logistics Airport Authority.
Okay.
Accessory Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. I do the closed session announcements. May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. There was one item on the agenda this evening, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 54957B, position city, position title, city manager, and there is no reportable action with respect to that item.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the pledge of allegiance, and it will be led by our captain, John Schuler. Please stand.
Face the flag, right hand over your heart. Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item here. It's a workshop, agenda item number one. And this item is discussion and possible action regarding placement of a special tax measure for public safety on the November 2017 ballot. The recommendation is, any subject action or further direction for staff is at the discretion of the City Council. So at this time, I will turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Doug Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we've talked about this on several occasions, I don't want to really belabor it. We've received direction over the last six months or so, off and on, regarding our fire options, and this is sort of an outgrowth of that. That discussion regarding fire obviously continues, we're, as we sit, awaiting a bid from CAL FIRE. But that's not really the topic tonight. The topic tonight is how do we pay for future public safety services? And the council asked staff and myself to put together some options to be considered and to do some research. So essentially, what, based on council direction, what we've been narrowed down to are two different options, one being a parcel tax. That parcel tax could either be a flat set amount for every parcel, or it could be a variable based on parcel size and improvements on the property. The two examples, and we would not be necessarily, or we would not be using these, but just as an example, as has been discussed, FP5 is a flat parcel tax of approximately $150 per parcel, whereas the Apple Valley Fire Protection District has a tax that has a variable rate. I believe that the rate for a vacant parcel is only about 60 some dollars, whereas something that is a larger, more commercial parcel with significant improvement is up into the hundreds of dollars. So depending on your opinion, that may be seen as more or less fair, I suppose. So the other option under consideration that we need direction on would be to put a new transaction and use tax. It's commonly referred to as a sales tax because it's collected with sales tax, but for the purely sort of legal definition, it's a transaction and use tax, so. And we do have that opportunity at either a quarter percent sales tax or a half cent sales tax. And we can provide more information about any of those options. So the intent tonight is to receive comment, direction from the council so that we can bring back a tax option, assuming you want one of those, bring back a tax option on a resolution to actually call for the November special election, November 2017. That, I'll turn it over to the council for any comments, discussion, questions. I don't know if you have cards on this or not.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Madam Mayor, I have questions.
Go ahead.
The difference in the parcel tax, when Apple Valley was having the election, which by the way overwhelmingly was approved by the voters, broke it down in that the parcels, depending upon the improvement, paid a different tax, which seemed more fair than every parcel paying the 150 or 153 or whatever it is. For example, the one that I said was unfair, $153 per parcel, I would pay, on my house, 153. The vacant property would pay 153. Costco would pay 153. Hate to use Costco, but just as an example. It seems to me that if you had taxes based upon property tax, it would be totally different. And so Apple Valley tried to come up with a tax that had a benefit, as a benefit assessment. In a benefit assessment, you're required to make that distinction. And somewhere along the line, I was told that Barstow, the city of Barstow, was going to go to an election in November, they're dealing with the same problems that we are dealing with here in financing public safety. And they are going with a sales tax, or that's the latest I heard. We have a freeway coming through the middle of our city, and two Highway 18 and 15, and we have a lot of responses for car wrecks and so on. And the parcel tax doesn't reach those people. So we're asking, on that basis then, for all the people in the city of Victorville, to make sure that we provide that protection for the fire department, to all the people, not the all the people, but for a majority of the people who don't live here but pass through but require the services. And thinking about that, it would appear, from my, not having a lot of information, quite frankly, is that the best interest of all the residents of Victorville would be vote for a sales tax, which means that all the people who come in, including all the travelers who come through here, would help pay for that. It would ease the burden for all of the people in Victorville who own property, and it would make it more equitable because for those people who don't live here, pay no taxes but need the services, would be contributing because of the sales tax. We know that a lot of people shop here, use the services, and wouldn't be contributing for that. So I wish I had more information. There may be reasons that a part, that a sales tax is not good. We don't want to kick the can, I don't want to kick the can down the road. A quarter cent sales tax is a small amount that helps an awful lot. The half cent sales tax makes more sense. Whatever we do, I'm going to ask the council to pledge unequivocally that every penny that's collected, except for the collection cost, that it go to the purpose we say, and we don't end up collecting money and then building a train to nowhere. I think that we're all disgusted with government that tells the people we need to raise a tax or a fee, and then we spend the money someplace else. And I'm of the opinion, based upon what I've been told, as long as we don't, if we don't give the public that assurance, it's destined to fail. So we have to agree to that up here, if we go in that direction, or whichever direction we go. I believe we need to make sure, we guarantee to the public that we will use the money for what we say we're going to use the money for. And thank you very much for listening to us.
If I could answer, I know it wasn't quite a question, but I just want to bolster that with one piece of information. What we're proposing, or what is being proposed, is a special tax. A special tax has to be written for a specific purpose, has to be accounted separately only for that purpose. So I would agree that it would be very important for the council to make that commitment to the public, but to back up the council as well. Legally, we would be precluded from spending those dollars on anything other than that which it was collected, which is why we're proposing it as a public safety tax. Could be used for fire, for police, and even code enforcement, if that's ultimately what we want to use those funds for. But it could not be used for a bridge or a train, or for, you know, salaries of City Hall employees who aren't providing public safety. So, sorry, I don't want to interrupt your deliberations or your discussions, I just wanted to make sure that was painfully clear, something I didn't go over in my first sort of lead in.
I'd like to add just a couple things. I don't see the connection between fire and police issues with the ownership of property. To me, that connection has never made a lot of sense, so I don't see why we would connect that to a property tax. It's, I'm not sure you can ever attach it to any particular individual, but it's more, it's of a general kind of problem that I think a sales tax addresses more equitably. I've been doing tax work for almost 50 years, so let me say a little about sales taxes. They have a bad reputation. Most of the countries in the world have a value-added tax, which is a form of a sales tax as opposed to an income tax, actually as opposed to property taxes. That's how most countries generate tax revenues. Sales taxes in this country, and particularly in California, sales tax is a state tax, it's not federal. So each state makes its rules about what gets taxed. In California, we exempt food, we exempt prescriptions, and there are probably some other things that are exempted, but those are the two big ones. One of the claims about a sales tax is that it's regressive because it falls more harshly on low-income people than on high-income people, because it's the same tax rate on anyone who buys a taxable item. I think the fact of the matter is that in the case of low-income people, there's a much greater tendency to spend their money on things that are not subject to tax, whereas higher-income people tend to consume things that do require payment of tax, cars and boats and airplanes and lots of clothes and all that kind of stuff. So the sort of things that are going to generate this tax will be the kind of things you buy at the mall. They aren't going to be the things you buy at the grocery store. To me, it's the most sensible way to create the revenues we need. And the fact is, we know we're $3 million short on fire. It's easy to make the case that we're at least that short on police. How many here would like to see us add 10 police officers next year? Yeah, I think we're all in favor of that. I don't think $10, $3 million would get us 10. Would it get us?
That would get us 10.
It would get us 10.
That would get us 10.
Be delightful, would love to see that. We don't have in our present structure, our revenue structure, we don't have the funds to do that. If we don't generate an additional revenue item for that purpose, not going to be able to do it. Very likely, with fire, we're going to be forced, if we can't get the public to agree to this, whatever the tax is, we're going to be literally forced to annex into the FP5 Fire District, Fire Protection District, that is going to impose that $150 parcel tax on everybody. I own the lot, my house is on, and I own the lot next door, so it's going to cost me 300 bucks a year for my house, and all the big stores in town are going to pay 150. I mean, there's just a real fundamental unfairness to that FP5 option. We don't want to do it. But if we can't get anything else, we're not going to have a choice. We've got fire engines that need to be replaced, we've got equipment. So this one gives us the option to deal with both fire and police, and it's going to fall on everybody as opposed to just property owners.
Madam Mayor, some comments. We've had a lot of issues with budgets that come up here, and one of them, one of my favorite, has always been the landscape maintenance district for specific plans, master plans, neighborhoods in the city. The original contracts to maintain common areas in a lot of the areas of the city were drawn up when the minimum wage was $4 and 1/4. Gas was a dollar. So what happens is, is that the funding that was set aside, you know, we pay a lot, all right? My particular neighborhood, we pay, there's a lot of taxes, some stuff I don't agree with, but whatever. But this one in particular, the landscape maintenance district, every time in every community that it comes up, you do not have enough funds to take care of the common areas in your community. So you have two choices. You will, you can raise your assessment, or whatever it is, or you can have less services. And 80% of the voters, every time, say they don't want that extra tax, knowing that they're not going to have as much service as they used to. And I, I don't know what's going to happen at that, but you know, I don't like to speculate. I like to focus on likely outcomes. And in this particular instance, you're talking about multiple types of tax situations, increases, which typically I'm against. And if you ask all five of us which one would be the best, we'd probably have five different answers. And if you ask the public five different taxes, they'd just be all over the place. But the likely outcome is that if it was placed on a ballot, it'd get voted down again. And so now it's a big waste of money, in my opinion. And, you know, people have sat there at that podium and told me that rising costs are just a fact of life. Your costs are going up, you guys are going to have to pay more, the voters are going to have to pay more. And they come in here and say it so flippantly, it's surprising, actually, because we're not talking about a little bit of money. These are multi-million dollar decisions that happen. So in this particular case, the likely outcome for me is that it's probably going to be voted down, no matter what it is. Okay, now, we get back to the services. You realize without increased revenues, we're going to have limited services, and we already are stretched pretty thin. But you know, what happens is, is that you've got people moving further and further out from fire department coverage, you've got people possibly that, you know, they're moving further and further away from police, or the response times are longer, and there's no coverage, and we need to fix that coverage, but nobody wants to vote to do that. So, you know, if you came up here now, you can't put in a septic tank, you're going to probably be on the sewer, and why would you want to be on a septic tank? But that was the culture for a long time, is, oh, I'm going to get away from everything. Well, that was nice back then, but unfortunately now, we've got such a large amount of people with a large demand of services, and they're not, the revenues are not keeping up with the cost. So that's really where we're at. So if we don't see an increase in some sort of tax, then what's going to happen is, is that our revenues that go up every year, thank God for the last few years, incrementally our sales tax revenue and property tax revenue has been going up, which is great, but it cannot keep up with all of the things that we have to pay for. You talk about the retirement liabilities, you talk about outdated equipment that needs to be updated and renewed, you got equipment that you got to turn in. The breathing apparatus for the fire department was just, I think, $800,000. And, you know, these are things that you cannot put off forever. But we have one new fire engine in this city. And you know what? We've been having to do what everyone does. You do the best you can with what you've got. So instead of having a brand new one, we renovate or refurbish, or whatever it is that we do, recondition some of these assets. And I'd like to thank the police- some of these assets. And I, I'd like to thank the police, and the fire specifically, because that's what we're really focusing on here, county fire, county police, on the efficiencies that they've been able to come up with, and being creative, just to provide what we have now. And honestly, I, I'd like to go out and get another, uh, another fire department, a truck tomorrow. Uh, but you know what? Now, I'm starting to think that there's alternate funding that, that, that may need, we may need to start to look at the universe of possibilities, and not just the typical pots of money where we draw funds from. Uh, and we, we do. The one new, uh, fire truck we have was thanks to, uh, one of the, I believe, if I remember correctly, one of the fire department, uh, personnel had done all the work, or the, the county fire folks did the work to get the grants to purchase a new fire engine. So, that is exactly what we need up here in limited, in a limited resourced area. Now, in ten years, we're going to have more people and more demand for services. So, even if we added one deputy a year for ten years, we'd still not catch up. In ten years, we could have thirty thousand more people in this city. So, we're a half-built-out city, we are growing, we, we, we have growing pains, just like everyone else, uh, and this is not a simple issue, but I just wanted to say that. And my last comment or question is just, um, uh, how much is the, uh, special election, how much would that cost?
Um, so the special elect, or the election in November of sixteen was sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we haven't yet heard from the registrar of voters, um, on an estimate. Um, it's difficult for the registrar to make estimates. Uh, didn't mean that as a joke, but based on the newspaper article, uh, apparently it's very difficult. But it, for a special election, uh, there's no way for them to know yet how many items are going to be on the election. So, the, the cost of an election is spread across all those items. So, um, I wouldn't hazard a guess, given that it's very early in the game, but also given that the registrar has admittedly struggled with, with, you know, costs and coming up with cost estimates at this point. So, I can just reference that, that, you know, the last one was sixty-eight thousand dollars from, from November of sixteen.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I just have one final comment. Uh, and I'd also like to thank the city staff, uh, for being creative in this economic downturns that we've had since two thousand nine, a bunch of layoffs. Uh, we, you know, we, we're not back to where we need to be, or we'd like to be, but in the meantime, city employees have taken on two, three times the workload. Department heads that were there are no longer there. Uh, so there's been, again, a lot of creative cost-cutting, and, uh, just like to thank the city staff and everyone that's sta, sticking with us, and, you know, until things get better again. But again, fast forward ten years, we're going to be bigger, and we're going to have more costs, so.
Um, okay, I just received two cards, so before we continue with the, um...
You didn't allow me to comment.
I, I know, but I have...
Yeah, but you have to, you have to allow the comments for council members.
Go ahead.
So, the conversations that have ensued are not implicit, nor that, are they inferred? With that, I'm going to pose a couple of questions and make comments, to which I'll pause and hope to have answers from city staff. Who will be writing the ballots wording for this measure? It's my strong opinion that the ballot titles and summaries for local measures should be written by an independent body, and not by the local entity, which would be Victorville, placing the measure on the ballot.
Uh, that hasn't been decided. Typically, the city attorney, I believe, has written the actual measure.
Will a parcel tax that's passed be levied by a special district, or is it going to be by the city?
Uh, the parcel tax that's being discussed would be the, the city's parcel tax.
And will it be collected on an annual property tax bill, or is it going to be outside of the annual property tax bill, and will, will there be subject in reporting that? For example, there's government code that states that there's reporting, whether it's through state statement of reven, of revenues.
It would be collected as part of the annual property tax.
My concern with this property tax are that there's senior citizens who are living in a fixed income of under thirty-five thousand dollars, and have a primary home, that they will be potentially seeing a hike in their property taxes. Another group that I'm just as equally concerned about is the disabled veterans, who also have a primary home, whose taxes will be increased by this parcel tax measure that passed. And let not, and let's not forget the low and middle-income class property owners, who will suffer from a tax increase if there is a potential lob job, uh, loss of a job, and there's a rise in taxes. Parcel taxes are regressive, which means that it has the largest impact on low-income, middle-class, and small-business taxpayers. There are also structural inconsistencies, meaning that there are many inconsistency in how taxes are imposed. Some of those issues would be transparency issues, because many taxpayers don't know how their money is being used, and some taxpayers are told during elections that they will be exempt, but later they find out that it's too difficult to obtain an exemption. Parcel taxes lack sufficient transparency. Taxpayers should understand how the taxes are assessed, collected, and how the funds are used. When a property owner receives his or her annual property tax bill, there's no uniform method or requirement for how a parcel tax must be identified. And if a parcel tax is listed on the tax bill, it may appear under direct levies. However, even that doesn't guarantee that a taxpayer will know what the tax parcel is for. How are we considering these groups when we decide if a flat rate or a variable tax per size of land will be put in a, in the next four months on November twenty-seventeen?
Um, I'm a little bit confused, uh, but the parcel tax isn't something I've heard support for thus far, so we wouldn't move forward with that, um, unless there's some kind of a change on the council. But, uh, regarding either one of them, um, our intent would be to put, uh, bring forth a resolution calling the election the first meeting in August. Um, we have to have it filed by, I think it's August eleventh, if I remember correctly. So, um, our best option, uh, would be that, uh, first meeting in August, unless we want to call a special meeting, which I am not interested in. Uh, so that's sort of what we're targeting. Uh, one of the reasons why we called this special meeting, actually, was to be able to get the direction with as much time as possible, uh, so that staff and the attorney can put all these things together and bring it forward.
Although we know that such taxes, as some years, have done very well for school districts, I'd like to see, um, if we have collected any data based on parcel taxes, um, and how this would fend well during the ballot, where we have potential voters coming to vote. And this is in regards to fire protection districts, and I see we've added under two, under the umbrella, also law enforcement. Is there a reason why we're doing two instead of just the one, so that way it's not much higher taxes, and if we need to do another tax, increase something different?
Um, again, I, it doesn't sound like we're moving forward with a parcel tax, um, but, uh, the tax that was, is being proposed, um, if it were a parcel tax or a, a sales tax, um, it, the reason why we are calling it a public safety tax is because, uh, as I mentioned, we would be restricted, the city would be restricted on a go-forward basis to keep those funds separate specifically for those purposes. Um, so my recommendation, certainly the council can decide to make it a fire tax, could decide to make it a public safety tax, could decide to make it a police tax only, um, and then those funds would have to be held specifically only for that purpose. So, um, as a, uh, public safety tax, um, we, staff doesn't have direction to move forward yet, but anticipating, because of the short timeframe, uh, my thought was that as a public safety tax, um, you could pledge to the public that with the dollars that were brought in, you would, uh, open Fire Station, uh, three fifteen, which would add nine additional firefighters, uh, add a second squad, bringing that total to fifteen firefighters. Um, with that same tax, you could add at least ten new sheriff's deputies to the contract pretty easily. Um, and then you could even add some code enforcement. We haven't talked to code enforcement, um, but, uh, over the years, we've learned that code enforcement is important to a, a sense of safety, more so than the actual public safety in some, in some cases. So, um, in anticipation of a vote to move forward with a tax, um, we've started some preparations, uh, and we would propose, uh, at that, uh, first meeting in August, that, uh, part of the documents that are submitted, call that out specifically. Um, let's say, just as an example, a sales tax, half-cent sales tax would bring in, we believe, uh, nine to ten million dollars, and you could very easily pledge to hire fifteen firefighters, paramedics, uh, included. Um, you could pledge to also hire ten new sheriff's deputies, and let's say, five new code enforcement officers. Um, all of that would be easily, uh, accomplished with that new revenue, and it would leave enough revenue to keep in that special fund for future, uh, retirement costs which are growing, especially on the public safety contracts, we know that. So, um, that's not an assumption at this point, it's simply, uh, trying to figure out what is, if the council wants to move forward with a tax, what is the most likely, uh, positive outcome? And given the short timeframe, uh, we believe that the most likely positive outcome is as simple as possible. Um, a special tax, sales tax, half-cent sales tax, is easy for the voters to understand, they've already approved it once, um, with Measure I. And simply letting them know that the council would pledge those numbers, fifteen firefighters, ten sheriff's deputies, five code enforcement officers, or whatever the council decides, I think gets the message across in informational way that's not advocacy, and has the best, the best option.
Um, a disadvantage for parcel tax would be land is immobile and limited in supply. A parcel is also considered part of a property that is located entirely within the indivisible boundaries of local government. A tax rate area where these, where these indivisible, indivisible boundaries may divide a taxpayer's property, thus creating multiple parcels out of a single property, for instance. If two parcels were located within the same boundaries of the same district often, um, then there would be an amount regardless of whether the parcel includes a multi-million dollar home or a small one. The only advantage that I saw to this, it, it's a two-thirds vote of the electorate, would be required if this were to even pass. Now, in terms of the sales tax, um, the disadvantage that I found was it could distort the economic activity by discouraging work or consumption. Um, however, there's a few other positive things. So, this is a rhetorical question. The transaction and the use tax would be for all tangible personal property, correct?
That's correct. Uh, it would be collected with the sales tax, so as Councilmember Kennedy mentioned, things like food and medicine would, would be non, non-taxable for this as well. I, I do have a little bit of concern, and I don't normally ask council questions, but, um, you've talked about the two different taxes. And one thing that we didn't put in the staff report that I think I need to make clear is, um, that we would not, although it's legally possible, we would not recommend, uh, there was some discussion at, over the last couple of months about maybe putting both items on the ballot, let's say, a parcel tax and a sales tax, and seeing which one the voters wanted. Um, both of those, if that were to happen, I would highly recommend against it. If that were to happen, um, one or the other would be a special tax. It would be a two-thirds majority in order to pass, you mentioned that. Um, so I want to make it clear that a sales tax, uh, would be a special tax, it would be two-thirds majority. A property tax would be, or parcel tax would be a two-thirds majority as well, because this would be at a non-general election. Uh, in order to make it a general tax, uh, you cannot specify something like public safety, and you have to do that at a general election, the next of which is November of twenty-eighteen, so. Um, but the reason why I would caution you against placing both on the ballot is because people would then be asked to pick one or the other, and it is almost certain that they would both fail. Um, just as an example, um, let's say that we have five council members here, all five of you believe that we need additional public safety, and all five of you want a tax. Uh, there's five voters in this scenario, three of you decide, well, I like the sales tax better, two of you decide, well, I like the parcel tax better. You all five agree that a tax is needed, but because neither side got two-thirds majority, they would both fail. So, I just want to caution the council against maybe placing both of these on, on the, the election, because you've guaranteed failure for both of them, in, in my opinion. Certainly not an elections expert or, or tax expert, but just the basic math is, it, it just works against it if you have multiples.
If sales tax and the user tax are mutually exclusive, which means either sales tax or the use ta, or the user tax applies to a single transaction, but not to both, what does this mean to the consumer or the shopper in, in Victorville?
Uh, I'm not sure what you mean by a user tax necessarily. Um, it, what everyone calls a sales tax, the eight percent, or whatever it is right now, is actually, it's a combination of a sales tax and a transaction and use tax. Um, so technically speaking, what we are proposing would be a half-cent transaction as you, and use tax, but people don't commonly refer to it as that. It's really a, collected with the sales tax, so we try to refer to it as a sales tax, because it's, it's more easily understandable. So, but there would only be one tax, uh, in that case. It would be collected along with the sales tax, the same way that the half-cent Measure I is collected. With, with every dollar spent on taxable goods, Measure I, you pay an extra half a cent to get, you know, new roads and interchanges and things built. So, it'd be very similar to that.
Okay. And if we're holding a special tax, why are we not placing the tax on a special tax fund, where taxpayers will know where their money is being expended? Although you did say i, it would be specifically, and it would go targeted towards these three areas, law enforcement, fire, and code enforcement, I was under the assumption that this is going to be placed under the general fund, not a special tax fund?
Uh, it would be, um, a portion of the general fund, but it would be restricted specifically for those uses. We use the general fund to pay for those services, the police, the fire, code enforcement. But we could not, we would be prohibited by law, and by a commitment made by this council, it sounds like, uh, from spending those dollars on something other than those items. So, uh, that includes any, I, I mentioned that, uh, that there would be enough money to put some aside for future, you know, growth in, uh, retirement, which we know is coming. That would have to be completely set aside. It would be part of our annual audit to make sure that those funds were in fact spent only on those special items as required by law.
Okay, and my last question, I'm sorry having you leave the floor. What are the projected revenues totals for implementing a half a cent and a quarter of a cent, and if there's any extra, where is that going to go?
So, based on our current, uh, sales tax, uh, we have not accounted for any potential reduction in sales in the city. Uh, if, uh, we're the only ones, uh, in the desert that have an additional half cent, there is the potential for people to decide to shop elsewhere. Um, but, uh, so just based on strictly the math, an additional quarter cent, uh, tax would bring in, in the neighborhood of five million dollars, and, uh, the half-cent sales tax then would be about double that, in the neighborhood of ten million dollars, give or take.
Thank you.
Or does the half million, the half percent generates what?
Half percent would generate just about ten million dollars.
Ten?
Half-cent sales tax, yes.
Quarter within would be half that?
Quarter, correct, correct. So, it's not quite, but we are still experiencing a little bit of sales tax growth.
It's interesting to talk about all the details of the, the tax names and whatnot, but when people get something tacked on to the, into their receipt, it says sales tax, and that's what people understand, and that's...
Exactly.
I wouldn't call it anything else. I mean, we can give it other names, but that's...
Yeah, for legal reasons, we, we try to always put it out there so that it's open, transparent, honest, but the reality is, everyone refers to it as sales tax.
But it is a special tax, and a perfect example of how it can work is what we've done with Measure I. We're all paying an extra half cent, and we have since what, Jim?
Eighty...
Eighty-seven, eighty-six?
Eighty-seven, eighty-eight, and it's paid for all of our transportation projects throughout this region. I think we're all glad to have them. I sure am. This one would be specially reserved. I agree. I, I don't think we ought to give a choice. I think the public expects us to do our job, study the issue, come up with the best proposal, and give them an up or down vote on it, yes or no. This is the one we think works best. It's an education. We're going to have to educate as best we can, the people that want to know.
I, Madam Mayor, I hope that all five council members agree on what to do, and all agree on which direction to go, because I'm afraid that if we don't, it'll be doomed to failure. We all have a constituency, and if there's a council member that disagrees with this, they need to meet with staff immediately to see if those problems can be answered, so that we can get back to the council as soon as possible, because if we move forward with a partial council wanting to do it, we ought not move forward, it'll fail. Um, so I'm hoping that we get all the questions answered. So, I'm hoping that we get all the questions answered. We still have a lot of work to do. For example, we've got ten, twelve million dollars worth of equipment to buy. Is that included? Is that separate? And we only have to get all this done less than a month.
That's correct.
So, we're not going to answer, I'm sure each and every one of us have additional questions. We need to get those to the attorney, to the city manager. We need to get them answered so at the next, we take an action, can we take an action tonight to move on the ballot? That's not the details, that's just a reserver's spot, right?
No, we're, tonight, we're just looking for a direction on exactly what you want us to bring back in resolution format, that you would then, I think the technical term is you would call the election in November. And like I said, we're targeting the first meeting in August. We do have a meeting coming up in a week, right here, but we can't have it ready by then.
We got a lot of public comment, and I think before they all go to sleep listening to us, they ought to be able to step up and speak their minds.
All right. Thank you. I have no further comments.
Okay. Well, myself, I feel that the parcel tax is not the solution to our needs. I'm also in favor of the sales tax. And I won't go into a lot of discussion. I think everyone has already explained, you know, how they work, or how it will work for us, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood my thinking. And parcel tax would only, of course, you know, put the burden on the property owners. And sales tax would be everyone, including people passing through and buying something here. So, sales tax is really what I feel would be the answer if the public votes for it. So, at this time, I guess...
I don't know if that was coming back or not. It's probably a public comment.
Okay.
Comments on this side.
At this time, we're not making a decision, or are we giving direction?
Staff is looking for direction.
Yeah, we are looking for direction, but it'd be appropriate to take public comment and then give us some final thoughts. You may change your mind after hearing from the public.
Okay, very good. So then, I do have two cards, so I can move on with those, correct? Okay, the first one that I have is Robert Harriman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to make a couple of comments on the tax issue. I don't think we should have a choice either. I think we should have a sales tax. If people can't absorb a penny for every four dollars, I don't know where their head is, that's, you know, especially, we had one comment about low-income people. Everybody has to pay if they want, I mean, a penny for every four dollars is kind of insane to complain about. Public safety is used by everybody, and a lot of the people living in any city are tenants. And the tenants, when they call and say that "I don't feel good" or "I had a heart attack" or anything, requires the first responders to come, I don't believe it's fair for homeowners only to pay that tax. It should be paid by everybody, especially the ones that are going to use it the most, and low-income tends to use it the most. Bond measures. I hate bond measures. It's ridiculous. I don't care what kind of bond measure it is. School bond measures, it affects the homeowner only. You can rent out a house and be the one paying the bond, yet your tenant has three kids in school and they pay nothing. I don't think that's fair either. That's for another discussion probably, but I think that's biased in nature too. I hate that. The transportation corridor will feed a lot of money into this, in the sales tax issue. The Interstate Fifteen is a main corridor to Las Vegas, obviously, and a lot of people, and the hotels, everything that that generates could be used. And like Councilman Cox mentioned, I would say almost all the car accidents on the freeway are people passing through. It's generally not as often residents as it is people coming through town. The liberals crack me up. Let's just go with that, okay? They'll pass any tax in the state of California and receive nothing for it, okay? But when it comes to a city tax where it's going to affect their lives and make life better, they'd normally vote against it. I will be a lobbying voice, if I can, for anybody to make sure this passed, this tax gets passed. I think it's beneficial to the city to make sure
Three minutes.
We have a flyer that go out to every residence and to explain all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Clayton Moore.
Based on the research I heard at your earlier workshops and such, I was inclined to go toward the parcel tax, even though I'm a homeowner. And maybe we should take a second look at the dimensions of that. I understand what you're saying about the sales tax proposal, and that looks like the momentum's behind that. And if that's what the research bears out, fine, but saying that it's going to fail before you even try is not a measure for success. Try. We believe in our students around here, and we should believe in the voters a little bit. Like the gentleman said, you want to educate the public, you want to promote the benefits of the tax that you're asking them to pay for, do that like every week, twice a week, all the time. Lead with that. You know, we all have decisions we have to make that sometimes are difficult, but if we put all the factors out there, it becomes a lot easier for everybody to accept. The context of the costs. I'd like to know more about the crime wave that keeps the sheriffs too busy to have coffee with the public once a week for an hour or two. You know, let's hear about it, so we can all deal with it, and maybe give them some more concrete support. We'd like to support these entities, okay, in the proper way, the appropriate way. And certainly disclosing that the fund this money goes into, like the highway fund, would be set aside for that purpose and monitored for that purpose. That's valuable information. All these things are valuable information that I'd like to see more widely discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Those were the only two cards that I had. So, at this time...
Madam Mayor, a question to the city attorney. It would appear, based upon all the comments of the council when they were present, that there is a preference for the sales tax, and therefore, what would be the appropriate motion to ensure that this is done absolutely correctly, to get staff and the attorney moving to prepare those papers to take that action?
We would need a motion indicating that you're directing staff to prepare a resolution to put a sales or technically a use in transactions tax. You need to tell us the amount, if you want it to be a quarter of a cent or one-half.
Half cent.
And then, you also need to tell us if you want it for public safety, meaning both police, fire, and/or code enforcement, or if you want it limited to one of those, either one of those. My sense is that everyone wants a public safety one for both police and fire from, that's what I gather from the comments I heard, and I assume also code enforcement.
Yeah, one option would be just to leave it as public safety and define it as police, fire, and code enforcement. If it passes, at some point, there'll be a budget process, and the council could at that time decide, you know, how much, if any, to put towards code enforcement. My purpose in bringing up the fifteen, ten, and five is just trying to come up with something easily digestible, since there's only a few months before the election, and because the city is prohibited from advocating for a tax, for any ballot measure. We could not, as the city, put out a flyer that says "you should vote for this tax." We can inform the residents, through the use of a flyer, that if this tax passes, the city council committed to spending it on these things, and state law, blah, 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 restricts it to only those things. So, if as part of the item, we specify in that resolution that you would hire fifteen new fire personnel, fire and paramedic personnel, ten new deputies, and minimum of five new code enforcement officers, if that's the desire on the council's part, we could then educate the public using those numbers without advocating for it, just simply saying, "This is the intended use of these monies, and we are restricted to only those things."
That restriction apply to individual council members or only the formal council?
It is the city, the city. So, individual council members, individual members of the public, such as Mr. Harriman, could advocate all they wanted. I defer to the city attorney on what the council member speaking individually should advise the public before advocating, if that is what you so desire.
You are correct. They should not be advocating, but individual members of the public certainly can advocate as much as they want and help out.
Yeah. But could a council member advocate as a member of the public?
They can technically, but it gets very murky when they start doing that. If they say, "I'm just saying this purely as a member of the public and not in my position as a council member," that's typically okay, but again, that, the lines get very blurred.
Yeah. Was your motion in there somewhere, Jim?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we had an appropriate motion, that we moved ahead, and two weeks from now, somebody didn't bring up the fact that it was inappropriate. So, I wanted it to be correct.
Based on your comments, I assume the motion would be for staff to move ahead and prepare an ordinance or a resolution to look at a five percent, or a point-five percent use in transactions tax to be limited for uses on public safety, including police, fire, and code enforcement.
I don't, I want to speak to that. What is...
Wait, wait, I'll make that motion, so now you can speak to it.
Okay.
What? Fine, I won't make the motion, speak to it.
Because I won't vote for code enforcement. That's why I want to ask the question. What is this year's budget for police?
Oh, gosh. I want to say twenty-three million dollars.
Twenty-three million. How much fire?
Including the airport, roughly fifteen million. Without the airport, thirteen and a half.
Eight million dollars. Why are we worried about code enforcement?
My point was just to throw it out there for discussion purposes only. Certainly, staff isn't married to the idea of keeping code enforcement in there or not. It was just giving options.
Jim, one of the issues you've talked about for the last two years has been code enforcement, and how that is so closely linked to problems in the city. I mean, why wouldn't we at least allow some of it to be used for that purpose?
Because you don't need it.
Don't need code enforcement?
No, you've got thirty-eight million dollars that you have to raise for police and fire. This raises ten at best, plus we have millions of equipment we have to buy, you know.
We've got, we've got police and fire covered today. What we're talking about is ten million dollars to add, to do some equipment additions, but to add additional police and fire. We don't need it to cover current year's budget.
No, we could not use it to cover current year budget as a special tax.
Couldn't use it to cover the current, but every year, current goes up substantially. That's why we're here having this discussion. We will never raise enough in the sales tax to even get close to having a surplus over funding police and fire. But I just wanted to bring it up and have the discussion before we voted on it, so it's totally up to the council.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, I, to speak to your point, Mr. Cox, I think that limiting it to police and fire simplifies it even further. Simply, I'm just throwing options out there so that you can have a full and thorough discussion about what you want this tax to pay for.
So, then, would the motion be to have staff prepare an ordinance or a resolution establishing a one-half percent use in transaction tax to be limited to police and fire?
That would be my motion.
Second.
What happened to the one-quarter cent? There was two, there was half a cent and one-quarter cent. You're just including the quarter cent.
I'm including the half percent based on the comments of council members. If you wanted to propose a substitute motion at one-quarter percent, then...
Well, in our discussion and in our readings with written communication, we didn't have just the one-quarter percent, we also, the one-half percent, we have the one-quarter. And I was thinking, are we not putting that a part of it? I mean, what happened to that? I'm just wondering.
That's why we had a staff discussion about how much a quarter cent would raise versus how much a half cent would raise, and our understanding is the council would prefer to go with the half cent based on the amount of money it's raising.
Oh, okay, so it was either one or the other. It wasn't that we were bringing both?
Correct.
Got it.
I think what would annoy everybody is if we raised the tax and it's still not enough. Let's raise it so that it's enough.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Now, we move on to item number two. Discussion and possible action regarding a cannabis tax measure. The recommendation, any subject action or further direction for staff is at the discretion of the city council. I do have several cards, so...
Well, Madam Mayor, before we, before we get to the several cards, this is not a public hearing, and we've already had the hearing on cannabis, and we know, I thought Mr. Negretti was going to be here, because he had suggested at the end of the last council meeting that there were now conflicts, wanted that ordinance referred back to the attorney and the staff so that there wouldn't be conflicts, but we never got there. Anyway, I don't know why he had to leave, and I'm sorry, I think he had...
Had an emergency or something.
But, but we're going to, we're going to be looking at that again, but not tonight. We may even have another public hearing, but what we have to decide tonight is, do we want a cannabis tax measure put on the ballot? And this is going to require some discussion. I, by the way, I have already had some discussion with private individuals promising the city millions and millions, and that's not going to happen, and I don't want to have that discussion. But one of the things that we have is conflict. And then, we have to decide what the state's going to do, and we don't know. I keep, I've been told, oh, the state wrote the rules, the city's just not looking at them, and I haven't seen them, but, but the question is, do we want a cannabis tax for this November? I'm assuming it's November. Is that correct, Carol Lee?
That is one of the options, or it could be, if it's established as a special tax, it would be this November. If it was set up as a general tax, it would have to wait till November of 2018. Most cities actually, those cities that are taxing cannabis do actually, or have imposed it as part of a general election, so I think there's only one city we've come across that has done it as a special election, because then you have to specify specifically what the funds would be used for.
Well, we have a, we have a chicken and an egg. If the, if the council authorizes additional uses or selling, or growth, or delivery, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I wouldn't dare even consider that without having the tax. I don't think anybody else would either, and I don't think anybody objects to that. On the other hand, if you put it on the November ballot, people are going to want to know, are we going to have it or not? Are we going to have sales? Are we going to have growing? We haven't decided that. Whatever we do to be in compliance with whatever the state does, it ought to be taxed. It's going to cause more police needed and more enforcement. We know it. I don't look and read everything I can get a hold of and keep my fingers crossed, but that is my belief, that's my opinion, and therefore, there's got to be a tax that go to that effect. Now, if not, what's it for? Can't be going to the, we can't let the public believe, well, we have a sales tax, vote out of the cannabis tax. We can't get these confused. We can't. And as Doug pointed out, if you put the parcel tax and the sales tax on the same thing in November, they're both going to fail. My, I'm scared to death, if we put this on the November ballot along with the sales tax, they're both going to fail.
Most cities that are...
That's why I want this discussion.
You know, I'm going to add to that, Jim. One of the comments in this write-up we got was that the amount of tax involved here is... One of the comments in this write-up we got was that the amount of tax involved here is so small that it, it, probably not worth poisoning any other ballot issue with this. The enforcement issues, trying to collect a tax like this are a whole different set of problems. I would not want to go anywhere with this if, when we're dealing with this other ballot issue this year, Frank. I, I think it's a mistake.
And to confirm that, I mean, most cities that have adopted these taxes have all done them as general taxes, the purpose being that then they can spend the money, it goes into the general fund and it's not restricted. Again, like I said, there's only one city we're aware of that has done it as a special tax, which again requires two-thirds vote as opposed to a fifty percent vote in a general election, which again would be November of 2018.
So as a point of clarification, because Negretti left, that was four-fifths vote, we were going to be bringing back that emergency ordinance, is that what I heard?
We don't have an emergency ordinance.
Yeah, we don't have any emergency ordinance.
No, we don't, but it was said that he had proposed to bring back the ordinance, so I'm getting clarification as to what that meant.
I haven't had any discussions with him, so I don't know what.
Right. Mayor Pro Tem Cox had mentioned this.
After the, at the end of the last meeting, the council member Negretti suggested that this, that the council not deny or not do anything but refer it back to, I believe he said staff and the attorney, but maybe the attorney. And my understanding is because he knew that we had a ban, a total ban, and based upon the action that the public demanded, which I guess was from misinformation, we were left with the ban, which means it's in conflict with the state. If it got referred back to the attorney and the staff, at least those items would be taken care of. We didn't get there. Now, so I wish he were here because my understanding is he felt that we can't live with those conflicts, it can't just stay, or it could, but if we do that, when the state releases all of the documentation and all the rules, then the state controls, state rules.
Correct. You, you actually have, based on the action at the last meeting, the ban has remained in place with respect to medical. However, you have nothing on your, in your municipal code regulating personal recreational use. And that was part of the purpose of the discussion at the last meeting, is did you want to do anything with respect to either one of those, the existing ban and/or the regulation of personal or recreational use? The state is going to mandate and provide rules with respect to personal recreational use. Since we have nothing in our code, the state law will preempt whatever we put in our code on this. You are allowed to do some regulation, that was part of the purpose of the discussion at the last meeting. However, without regulation, then the state rules will prevail.
Ben, are the state, when is the state going to be coming out? When are they going to be coming out?
Just on June 27th came out with some new regulations and it's going to be an evolving process. 2018 is when recreational cannabis becomes legal, except for personal cultivation, which is available now.
Personally, I'd like to see us put this in a drawer somewhere and come back and deal with it in January or February of 2018. I think it's going to cause nothing but headaches and waste of time for virtually nothing of any value. By that time, the state will have made some rules and we can decide. That'd be my preference, I don't know if that's a motion or not.
Well, personally, I think we are going to be discussing cannabis tax and we have a lot of individuals here that would at least get, like to get their hearsay. And what I have understood is if we do put out this user tax, this particular group makes sure that this does not pass, so I don't know if, knowing that, we don't want to add a second option. So that is my two cents for what's happening here. I'm sure some of us agree to that. And I had a lengthy discussion in regards, so I think it's HDL, is that what it is? Is that the consulting?
Yeah, that's our consulting firm, they currently do a lot of sales tax work for us.
Right, and there was a, there was a discussion into what the mathematical and the opinions were to this regard, and I don't know that we've had any discussion so far as of yet into, into this potentiality. So if anybody can take it on from the city staff?
Just waiting to hear what the council's desire is as far as staff report or?
Well, I've requested to continue on for HDL to understand what involves there. I'm sure that council would immediately vote to not hear anything about this, so I'm trying to keep the discussion at least alive to understand what is happening with HDL and the mathematics behind it.
Well, if we decide just to not do anything until next year, everybody can come back in January or February when we decide to talk about it.
Right, so I've requested for.
You want to talk about it now?
I've requested for staff to give some input.
We've got nothing better to do, yeah.
So it looks like you might want to say something.
So it's a little bit awkward because typically the mayor asks for staff presentation if that's what's desired. Because we have cards, are typical, has been to hear from the public before presentations unless there's some sort of special reason why we want to get the presentation first. I'm fine with either one, I can give a brief presentation if, if that's the desire of the mayor.
Let's hear the public comment.
Okay, so then I guess we'll do it after public comment, we'll get the presentation, looks like that's what we have here.
Have to make you decide here, okay?
Excuse me?
I will decide then.
As a council member, I also have the right to ask for certain things.
We've got to work together here, folks.
Whether it's presentation before or after is fine.
We're here, folks.
Mayor?
Going to do public comment?
Mayor Garcia, it's up to you, if you'd like to do the comments first or get a staff report first.
I will do the public comments first. Okay, the first card that I have is Justin Mason, and after him is Joshua Laurie. Okay, Justin Mason, you can come up.
Madam Mayor, because of the last meeting, I feel a need to announce that.
Just a second, we do have a time limit.
Yes, three minutes.
Three minutes. Be, because of the newspaper article, I do feel a need to let you know that I'm just going to grab a bottle of water, I'll be right back. I can hear you back there too, so don't feel like I've walked out on anybody.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Justin Mason, I've been a resident in your city, citizen in your city for thirty-five plus years. I graduated from Victor Valley High School, my roots are here, everything's here. I, I own Supporting the Patients, we're here in Victorville, California, and I agree on taxation. It helps growth, it helps everything move forward, it's going to be here, we like it or not, it's on the state level, it's going to be sent down this way. As far as Kennedy, with every plan, you need a backup plan, you need an A and a B. I've been part of construction for sixteen years, you can't execute, execute something without an A and a B plan. Having just an A plan with the parcel tax or just the raising the sales tax, as far as the community goes, I don't think that's, you're not giving the community options to, to vote for. So by having, having the cannabis tax in November on the ballot gives them more option so they can go further with their vote. By not giving them options, it's kind of giving them that, that clarity that you're only giving them one thing, and that's the only thing. And the next year is going to be the same thing, the next year after that's going to be the same thing. There's no growth in taxes. There's growth in the industry. Thank you.
Joshua Laurie, and then, oh geez.
Hi, I'm Joshua Lothrie, Mayor, council members. I have, I'm a cann, I'm a cannabis user for twenty years and I'm not a criminal, I have no criminal background, I served in the military. I've been in the high desert for twenty-something years, my parents have lived in the high desert for over twenty-five years, actually, my dad is dead in the high desert. I'm just asking you, council members, to really look at this tax, and I know you, you have numbers, but those numbers are jaded, you're not looking at manufacturing, cultivation, there's a lot of other things that go into those numbers than just dispensaries. The taxing, I think, would be great. If you don't do it, you're going to, you're going to open the door for black market in your, in your neighborhoods. The crime, the crime rate here is already at an all-time high, we all know this, I'm not going to, you know, bash you guys with it, I want to, I want to help and I want to get this down too, because I have children here too. I'm just asking for you guys to listen to us, all of you guys, I know we're, we're from different backgrounds, different, different ethnics, and we all have different beliefs, but on this right here, it's moving forward, California's moving forward. And if you guys stand back and just, just sit and say, ah, we're just going to just wait on this and wait on that, like you were saying, Mr. Kennedy, it's a bad move, because we're just, we're just procrastinating whatever, what California's already doing. What we need to do is start getting into discussions with business owners in this, in this cannabis industry that want to help you guys with taxes, that want to help your guys cities, that want to help your police and fire departments out, which is going on across, you know, you know Colorado, for example, if you did your homework, Colorado's doing very well in, in places with this. Oregon is just legalized in January, they've revenueed sixteen-point-eight billion and half the, half the state doesn't agree with it either, but the half that does is doing, is doing fine in it. It's going to cause people to move out of your city, it really is, there's a lot of people here that are cannabis-friendly, fifty-seven percent, fifty-six percent, a lot of people are going to move out of your city, they're going to go to other cities, they're going to go to Adelanto to work, they're going to go to Hesperi to work, they're going to go to Apple Valley. Now, what I ask you guys is to work with us, to work with you, and let's set regulations, let's do things right, and do things right for the people. You guys are for us, you are the people, let's work together. It's not hard, it's pretty simple, we're not criminals, you know, most of us, you could background check us, we're good people, and we want to be a part, and a part of this community and make this community grow and be strong. I'm not here to bash people or bash what you guys do as council members, I'm just here to, you know, to, to, to work with you. And I would like to, you know, talk to you guys when I'm on, if we can, in discussion, if you guys are interested in, on any kind of educational, you know, about it, what it does for people, I know sometimes it's, it's jaded with, 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 with the youth and the way they go about, but there's a lot of people that benefit from it that are military, military, ex-military, PTSD, people that you would really, people that you fight, that you fight here for, you're military, and these are the people I fight for, veterans, the elderly, the people that have trouble with mental problems. And I'm going to continue to fight that, whether you guys are on board or not, so hopefully you guys are on board and we can work together. Thank you for your time.
Now, now clap in please. We're having a meeting. Kasha Harrington, and then after Kasha, it's Juan Jose Segundo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. So half a cent doesn't seem like that much. I don't think that's going to be much of a problem. But where I'm confused is that there is already a viable cannabis industry in Victorville. If I had a business that wasn't cannabis-related and you were so quick to add a tax on my business, but you weren't interested in adding a tax on a business that's been here for a while and continuing to grow, that would confuse me. I'm sure some of the local businesses are going to stand up against the tax, even though it's only half a cent. I just think it would show due diligence on your part to acknowledge the industry is here. The idea that regulating cannabis is going to increase issues with safety doesn't make sense to me since it's already here. All you're going to be doing is acknowledging who they are, where they are, and how much they're selling, and recovering some income from that. To continue to say we're going to put it off, you're just giving the money back to the people that aren't contributing to your city. So we continue to come here to try to explain to you that the businesses exist, they're abiding, most of us are abiding by the regulations that we do have, and the missing piece is our city. Our city to acknowledge that we are here, it's a business the state has allowed, and we need our city to recognize that. You don't have to like it, you don't have to agree with it, to know that it's here. So with that, you know, I, I, you have my support on the half-cent tax, it makes sense, but I think if you show that you were also going to tax cannabis in addition, use the money for the golf course if you don't think it's going to generate as much revenue as what we think it would, but put it somewhere where you need it, so you're not having to do a tax increase, because it is going to grow, it's going to continue to grow. So thank you so much.
Juan Jose Segundo, and then after him, Marcy Spears.
Hi, good evening, Ms. Mayor and Council. When we talk about opportunities in our lifetimes, we rarely have opportunities that have a brand-new industry show up. In my lifetime, I've seen the dot-com industry, but it's the only one that I've seen. Now I have another opportunity to see another industry coming that's, it's rare. Victorville has the opportunity to capitalize in this industry. When I envision a retail establishment, I envision a Buffalo Bills of cannabis products, not those that have cardboard or foils on the windows. This is opportunity to say, what does Victorville want and what's different about us? I want to see revenues generated from this have a high priority on kids, youth programs, renovations to the golf course, supporting law enforcement and public safety around the areas. One doesn't have to condone the smoking of marijuana to vote to tax it. The fact is, many people would outlaw fast foods, cigarettes, alcohol, and tiny bits because of the harm that they cause. Give the people of Victorville the choice to receive medical marijuana without the fear of prosecution, criticism. In these economic times, we should be looking for ways to create jobs, produce opportunities, revenue, and increase morality in the city. Thank you.
Marcy Spears, and then Jason Renteria.
Hello, first I want to apologize, I'm a little laryngitis here. I wanted to say thank you for your time. My name is Marcy Spears, I'm the owner of Gemstones, it's an award-winning topical-infused cannabis and product that focus on, is on non-psychoactive ways to relieve pain, heal skin, and for both humans and adults, pets and children. The reason I'm here is to find a home for not only myself, but my business. What I'm looking for is a city that will regulate and set up a structure that sets up fair pricing and, and fees, and a taxation system that benefits the programs that your city needs while bringing jobs and safeguards to your public at, at the same time. So what I'm looking for is, is those things, and what I'm hoping is I'm standing in that city that can provide those. Thank you for your time.
After Jason Renteria, it's Francis Shawrecker.
There's no denying Victorville could use an extra tax revenue. Instead of having an additional parcel tax or sales tax added, why not tax elsewhere? With so many marijuana users in the city of Victorville, they can offer an extra source of tax revenue. That could, that could mean extra money to pay new housing, healthcare, services, and schools. Marijuana gets a tax just like any other product or services sold in the country, the difference of the customers would be negligible. They could even pay less despite the tax levy on what they buy. If marijuana were to be legalized, some, something else interesting would happen. We, we would, could see an increase in jobs, raise revenue for the city, and it could stimulate the Victorville economy. Examples might include food items, produce to help their preparation, a new grow, growing industry that is legal would help boost Victorville's economy. That can only be good thing, especially for the joblessness, as there would be more job prospects out there. The cannabis industry has reached a, a pinnacle moment in history. There are, we're at the forefront of not only the new industry, but also the global movement. We do not, today, what we do today has massive implications on our future. Professionals cannot be forgotten in our industry. We have opportunity to create something great, something that will impact generations to, for years to come, but we must take the right approach. There are many compelling reasons to legalize the use of marijuana or regards of what size defense you are in, relations to the whole debate, you only have to take a look at a short mega, the mega money that is made by alcohol, tobacco, and to just to raise the legalization of marijuana would, would raise enormous income that would, could put the efforts in good use in Victorville. Thank you.
After Francis, it'll be Misty Fergoso.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow council. Thank you for opening your mind to cannabis taxation as a new revenue stream for Victorville. Although we cannot predict the estimated tax potential from cannabis, maybe I can offer you some insight to help you think out of the box. This past weekend, at the San Bernardino Fairgrounds, there was a there was a music festival that was infused with cannabis. They saw over 25,000 people visiting from other states as Rhode Island, Minnesota, Connecticut, Ohio, Northern California, of course, and even Canada. These out-of-towners paid anywhere from $40 to $1,000 a ticket to enjoy this three-day festival here in your town. They also had to pay for travel and accommodations. Imagine over 25,000 visitors, both business owners and patrons, buying water at Costco, purchasing gas, enjoying our restaurants, and even selling out hotels. We heard of people looking as far as Barstow for accommodations for this event. This was an opportunity that Victorville could have taken advantage of, issuing permits maybe for this event, maybe offering vendors opportunities to maybe pay for permits as well. This was an opportunity that Victorville could have utilized as additional income. Not to mention the income that came by way of the use of Walmart, hotels, gases, gas, etc. As a cannabis, sorry. I just want you to think about how cannabis can contribute, not only to additional commerce for the city, also creating jobs and driving other businesses to the town. I'm sure we'd like to see Seventh Street revitalized and bring back our good nature of Route 66. As a cannabis business owner, I'm here looking to Victorville to think out of the box and look into cannabis regulations on all five license types. Victorville has the potential to surpass the other high-desert cities in this regard because you guys are right off the 15 freeway and very easily accessible. Thank you so much for listening to me today, and I look forward to working with you in the future so that I can be considered a contributing member of the community and not a criminal. Thank you so much for your time.
Say your name, please.
Misty Fergoso. I don't live in Victorville, I live in an adjacent town. I'm from Colorado. I've seen the tax go into effect with schools, with parks. They take the criminals off the streets, put them to work in the shops. It's changed a lot, and I've seen the good out of it. Instead of running down, like she said, Seventh Street, you could have a more popular place to go. I've seen it happen. I can't use narcotics, so I'm the ones that have to use cannabis because of my heritage. So it's a great thing, it does help the community. I've seen, again, Colorado, and it just, every town has taken something from it. The schools, fire departments, the cops.
Tim Greston, and then after him, Damian Martin.
I gotta get more than a couple minutes, or? I didn't get a response. Okay, I'll get through this as fast as I can. Hi, good evening, Council. I thought I was going to get a couple more minutes. I'm Tim Greston, I'm the president of the High Desert Cannabis Association. First, I just want to clear up a couple things on the agenda that you guys have written in there. Marijuana is a Schedule I drug. Because of that, it cannot be prescribed, only recommended by a physician. The MMIC card, medical identification card, must be shown to get a sales tax exemption. A recommendation by a doctor is what we use to obtain medical cannabis. Only the sales tax is exempt from medical cannabis. All other taxes being imposed are applicable. Without getting into it, we strongly oppose the MMIC card and believe that it's not only a recommendation sufficient for enforcement, but also sales tax deduction. The state was talking about getting rid of that, and we hope that happens. The infrastructure to allow the MMIC card is just not acceptable the way it is right now. A recommendation is not weaker than an MMIC card. You have to have a recommendation to get a MMIC card. And also, you can't deny transportation through your city. That's the state law, and you're not going to tell voters they can't get cannabis but from where you designate. If I want to call a legal dispensary in Atlanta or Hesperia, and they want to deliver, then I should be able to get that delivery. It will work that way for all the cities up here. You have to have the license in order to get the revenue. So when you issue the license, if they go in Hesperia, Atlanta, or whatever those people, then you will get that licensed revenue. Victorville, you're probably going to be able to charge up to about 5% for medical and recreational cannabis on the retail revenues generated. And that's nothing to dismiss. The medical benefits are far more than the agenda indicates. Cancer, epilepsy, chronic pain, AIDS, on and on. Much more than the dismissive statement written in the agenda. And finally, a distributor B is a B-to-B business. Dispensary is our term that the state law now calls distributors. Last time I stood up here, I asked you one thing. Name an initiative or proposition that passed that you deem not necessary to do anything about. I can see I'm running out of time here, so.
Three minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Damian Martin, and after Damian, Diana Casado.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Whoa! Don't need it. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council staff, public. My name is Damian Martin. I have some good news to share tonight. My firm, Greenwise Consulting, has gone from representing one concerned citizen to a group of business owners. So our movement is gaining strength, in particular, our movement is gaining funding. Our firm has instructed our client to work with the city on this now that we've kind of gotten past the emergency ordinance. And we've seen really great progress tonight with this cannabis tax measure on the agenda tonight. Ultimately, my client would like to see it go forward, placed on the ballot. What I would suggest is go ahead and place it on the ballot in competition with the sales tax and allow the cannabis tax to provide the funding for the public services that the sales tax is going to provide. And my client will take the Pepsi challenge with that sales tax any day of the week. Now, if that doesn't occur, what I'm going to recommend to my client is to essentially inform all the citizens of Victorville that the city council had an opportunity to raise this money through a tax on cannabis businesses in lieu of a sales tax. I'm not sure, you know, 50 cents, or half a cent, or whatever it is. It's still the government taking your money. Sales taxes are highly unpopular, and I'm assuming it'll be less unpopular once the citizens actually find out what's transpired on this dais. So that's just kind of a long way of saying that the road to 66 is going to be a tough one to hoe. Having said all that, I'd like to address the revenue issue, and particularly the numbers from HDL. I'll just come right out and say it, that the numbers are at least presented falsely or misleading. I'm going to teach you guys two simple, easy equations for calculating the revenue for cannabis businesses. So when we talk about false numbers, we had a number of like 2.5 million to 3.5 million of grocery receipts of retail sales in the Victor Valley, based on 350,000 residents. That's about the number that one dispensary will do. The actual number of grocery receipts in the Victor Valley on medical alone is about 40 million. If you tax that at 6%, you would get 2.5 million. The way that number is calculated is you take the number of residents in a given region, and you multiply it by the number of patients in the region. That number is about 2% based on data from other states where registration is required. And then you take the price per gram and the consumption per gram. They consume about two grams a day, and at $8 a gram. That's where that number comes from. The real number for calculating the revenue from cultivation sites is 1.5 million per cultivation site. The number is presented there was based on a per-square-foot tax. That's not highlighted in the staff report. What you would do instead is a tax, place a 6% grocery receipts tax on cultivation sites. And at, you know, 22,000 square feet, times .78 pounds per year, times $1,500 a pound.
Diana Casado, and then Jerel Schaubz, after.
Honorable Council. Madam Mayor, I'd just like to know, we have been, you know, sending emails and things, and it's been a little bit hard to speak to you on this. So I've tried at chamber meetings, I've tried emails. I'm just wondering what, you know, maybe Councilman Jim, you know, you just want to put it on the shelf. I'm the secretary on the board for the High Desert Cannabis Association. I spend a lot of my time talking to the businesses within the area and speaking with the patients. HDCA, we can help cannabis businesses comply with state and city laws when they come about. The state has SB 94, which puts ALMA and the medical use together. And we want to make sure that you're looking at that and seeing it and seeing what's coming up because it's almost finished. Does that make sense? So you can go in there and look at all of these different things that you need to do for your city. It's already written there. It's already written. You just have to take the time to look at it. $2 million, not really anything that I would sneeze at. I think, even though you have so much to go, Victorville has to understand that not one, any type of commerce is going to solve their financial woes. How did you get here in the first place? Through the HDCA, we've done things like job fairs, which just at one festival in Adelanto, 300 people looking for jobs in the cannabis industry showed up. Now, when we talk about jobs, we're talking about 401Ks, health plans, support for children, homes, and a reduction in medical use of opioids. You're talking about bringing people into a healthier lifestyle. So you're seeing all kinds of things. We call it in cannabis when you smoke and you take in all of the different compounds of the plant. We call that the entourage effect. And I believe that in this city, we would have an entourage effect of health and well-being and commerce if we would bring cannabis in. HDO, which is a company that works in Adelanto, they brought in $20,000 in grants to Victor Valley College. They accepted that, took pictures, were very wonderful, and very accepting of that cash from Victorville, I mean, from Adelanto, excuse me. $20,000 to a local nonprofit for children also. And one more thing, I'm sorry, I would like to know why we're not having the communication that I think that we should.
We're not allowed to.
Oh, you're not allowed to talk to your constituents? Okay.
Jerel Schaubz, and after him, Christine Blakely.
Hello, good evening. Madam Mayor, Mr. Cox, I'd like to, first of all, thank you for your consideration to taxing the cannabis industry, opening up possibilities for growth in the community. Secondly, I'd like to apologize for our actions on behalf of the cannabis community at our last meeting. A lot of people weren't acting appropriately. Fortunately, that was emotionally driven, we were scared, and a lot of fear was, I think, having people act out of sorts. So I apologize on behalf of the community. Mostly, I brought some numbers and a lot of information. We here in San Bernardino County sit between Wield and Pueblo County in population and over in Colorado. Now, I find in Colorado, they've got two state taxes. One of them is 2.9%, and that has brought in from $60,000 to $100,000 a month within the last four months. Another state tax is the 10% tax, and that ranges from $164,000 to $263,000 per month. Now, that's Poughkeepsie County, now we're a small part of San Bernardino County, but even a small portion of a similar income is quite a bit of money to be used for whatever needs can be, a fiscal fund or a special request. The projections from Colorado, Oregon, and Washington, they've all been blown out of the water. They've had their projection, people's casts, what they think might happen, and they've all been overrun by, you know, tens of millions of dollars. So your projections, they may not sound as nice as you'd like for them to be. And if I were you, I would expect them to be blown out of the water as well. This money that people are, that these states are collecting is being used for a lot of amazing things. They're helping people go to school. I mentioned Pueblo County. Pueblo County, every youth, every high school student in Pueblo County was given a grant to go to college after they graduate. They're helping the homeless get off the streets by providing money towards them, cleaning up the streets, making the cities better places to live, and providing help to the people that need it. A lot of the people that are selling under black market are being taken off the street and given legitimate jobs where they can pay their taxes through their wages, working for industries that supply money to the community. So I hope that you consider bringing cannabis into the community because it'd be, I think, a wonderful benefit. You're looking for money from a sales tax and then cannabis tax. Instead of splitting it, get it from both. I think that the sales tax.
I miss that, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Christine Blakely.
Good evening. I spoke last time, this time I'll be a little bit more mellower. Hope everybody's doing well. Christine Blakely, Chairman of High Desert Equality. This time, I brought you guys a smaller sample of the medical marijuana I use. This is a topical oil. I rub it on my arthritis, I don't have to smoke it. I do occasionally smoke it almost every day because it helps with my pain. What I'd like to say is the cannabis tax would definitely help with our problems here in Victorville. The other thing I'd like to say is this is the second time I've sat in on one of your meetings. I listened to everything that you guys said, and I heard you speak about the tax. I own a condo, I'm not really down with the owners paying an extra tax, just throwing that out there. I also like to say, I heard one of you say that you want the voters to make a decision. We did. We made a decision that we wanted medical marijuana. We also made a decision that we wanted recreational marijuana. Each decision that we've made, the city council has gone behind our backs and made decisions without our authority. We did not wish to have that ordinance 2352, or whatever it was that the council voted in, and we did not wish for whatever resolution that you added to that ordinance. What I am doing is I would like to give the city council my groceries from my High Desert Equality organization, which shows the things that we do for our city, be it the homeless, domestic violence, things like that. Also, for you guys to try a sample of the medical marijuana on any pains that you may have. Like I said before, it does stop the opium problem that we have. Norcos, what is it, OxyContin, Percocets. I've cut down on my pain medication tremendously by using this stuff. Could you pass this to them? And please, our High Desert Cannabis Association has been trying to contact you city council members to come to some kind of agreement with you guys. You guys passed that ordinance, that. You guys passed that ordinance, that ban, that medical marijuana users can't get our, our medicine. I do not wish to be a criminal and be, be accused a criminal just to get my medicine. It's not right, and you had no right to go against what we, the citizens of Victorville, Apple Valley, Hisperia voted for. But you chose to make that decision. We're in the money situation in this city because of the decision that you on the city council made. Now, I am asking on behalf of our citizens, tax the cannabis. Stop raising these other taxes, saying what you're gonna do with the money, and do other things with the money, just like I heard somebody say it was gonna be for fire, code enforcement.
It's three minutes. Those are all the cards that I have. So at this time...
Probably appropriate to have a staff report. I think you were planning to have a staff report from staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna be reading somewhat from the staff report. I know the council has had memo for a little bit longer, and so I just want to make a few things clear. Number one, regarding HDL, HDL has done no study work for the, for the city of Victorville. So it saddens me that they're being attacked at a meeting. The, three weeks ago, staff was directed to research the possibility of a cannabis tax for next November and bring it forward on the same meeting as this other special tax. So that's what we attempted to do. The very last paragraph of the memo that was submitted to the council, oh, I want to say maybe a week and a half ago or so, specifically says, "The intent of this memo is to provide the city council with updated information as we receive it. These are not final estimates based on actual figures which have gone through the fact-checking process we would normally complete with a detailed study. These are effectively my combined notes from two meetings, but they can serve as a basis for upcoming discussion and direction regarding a tax measure." So HDL agreed to a conference call with myself and staff. It was about 45 minutes long, and we simply posed questions to them because we had three weeks to get educated so that we could do our best to educate the council. So some of the notes that are in this memo were talked about, so I want to go through all of the notes that are in this memo regarding the tax revenue, not regarding the licensing and permitting options, which are in here simply as background because it's not what's for discussion tonight, whether or not the council will continue with a complete ban or allow anything, you know, above that. So in our discussion with that expert, we asked him, because he and his firm consult with over 40 cities in California. So we gave him some basic numbers of a valley population of about 300,000 to 350,000. We didn't include, you know, some of the county areas that are a little bit further out, didn't include Barstow, just really the four municipalities around here. So the estimates that he gave were based on those numbers. We asked about where would we even, what sort of a tax number would we propose? What are other cities doing? Because if you tax something too heavily, then it encourages the black market. If you don't tax it enough, then you're not gonna bring in enough revenue. So just to get some sense, generally, other cities are ending up around 6% to 6.5%. Someone said 5% earlier. It's, it's in that range. So, so based on that and based on gross receipts, on a population estimate of 300,000 to 350,000, his estimate, based on working with 40 other communities in California, was about 2.8 to 3.2 million dollars in gross receipts. Now, that would bring in 200,000 to 215,000 or so thousand dollars. I need to make it clear that that number is not year-one number. Right now, there are no dispensaries allowed in the high desert effectively. So year-one, we would anticipate there being a sort of enhanced effect, if you will, something new. People who maybe aren't gonna continue to use it might go try it. If we're the first city that allowed it, then we would see folks shopping here from other cities. Ultimately, my personal belief is that five to 10 years from now, this product is going to be normalized, similar to alcohol, perhaps not quite that normal. But over time, we will get there as a society. That's just my, my personal opinion. I could be dead wrong, but anyway, that's neither here nor there. So my point is that we asked for, or the numbers that he gave us were based on sort of year-three numbers, when the newness has worn off, when it's sort of balanced out to a recurring revenue stream potential. And the reason for that is if this council is looking to hire additional police officers and additional firefighters, we want to base that number on a continual revenue stream, not a first-year new revenue infusion. So that was the assumptions that we gave him in our 45-minute phone call. So ultimately, we ask, okay, that number is, as everyone has said, not particularly encouraging as an option. So what would it take to get to something more? I mean, the number that we have in, in our heads is we need $2.5 to $3 million just for the fire piece only. So what would it take to get there? So what he said was that essentially, if the city council were to allow four to six cultivators and four to six dispensaries as well, his off-the-cuff estimate was about a million dollars on a go-forward basis, and that the only way to get up to that nearly $3 million would be if we were the only city in the high desert that offered cultivation and dispensaries and essentially captured that market. Obviously, that's not happening. Adelanto has already made decisions that prevent that from happening. So the, again, 45-minute phone call with this gentleman, who was very giving of his time, resulted in if the council were to allow absolutely everything allowable, that we're looking at about a million dollars a year in revenue in his best estimation, based on very limited information.
Doug, you know, somehow, we have to relate this to our tax system. It's not income tax, but the only way to tax cannabis that makes any sense at all is to tax it like sales tax, for the state legislature to make the determination that it's subject to sales tax. But I'll tell you some things that they won't do. They won't tax what you grow at home. They, I'd be willing to bet they won't tax anything for medical use because we don't tax prescriptions now. So the only thing that will be subject to tax, if they do it properly, make it subject to sales tax, will be at the point of consumption for non-medical recreational use. And that makes sense. We have a system that can monitor that and enforce it. If we try to create a tax in Victorville, figure out what we're gonna tax that, that people will tolerate, we're gonna create a law and a tax that we can't enforce. We don't tax growing. No agricultural product in this state is taxed at the level of growing. We don't tax manufactured product. We don't tax it until it reaches the point of sale. That's the consumption tax. That's the sales tax. That's the only tax that makes sense. It's the only tax we can monitor and enforce. That's where it's gotta go. I hope it goes there next year. I don't want to wait five years. This is not about yes or no on cannabis. It isn't. It's with us. We all know that. Who's getting knew? All of our efforts to criminalize drug use have, what have they accomplished in the last 80 years? Nothing, absolutely nothing. We know that. So, so the benefit of making it legal is to be able to tax it. And the only tax that's ever gonna make sense is a sales tax at the point of consumption. And we need to get the legislature to simply make that decision, and then we process it right through our normal sales tax system. But I don't think it's ever gonna get taxed when you grow it at home, and it's, I really doubt that it'll ever get taxed for medical use. I mean, that's, that's just consistent with how our tax law works now. So that's where I'd like to see us put our efforts, convince the legislature to make it subject to sales tax.
I don't believe my motion is premature, but I make a motion to put a cannabis tax on the ballot for November 2017 to compete with the sales tax.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
What was it?
I make a motion to put cannabis as a tax on the ballot for November 2017 to compete with the sales tax.
Just to clarify, I believe a more appropriate motion would be to direct staff to bring it back because that action to put it on the ballot would need to be a resolution.
So then we, okay, so then let me then refer to the attorney, something of that nature. So as long as we continue the conversation, that would work.
Doug is correct. The motion would be to recommend that staff prepare something for the next agenda meeting that would either be an ordinance or a resolution to put a cannabis tax to the voters in November of this year, which means it would be a special tax.
Yeah, that would be the, if the council wants it, it would be on the, that first meeting in August, along with the other tax measure that we've already been directed to bring back for that meeting.
Is there a second? If there is no second, then the motion fails. Motion dies.
Since this is a discussion in regard to whether or not we want a cannabis tax, I'd like the staff to report back. We've heard contrary information. But I really haven't seen anything that I can analyze in regard to promises made about the riches that we're going to have. Put some kind of tax on it. I'd like to see that. You know, if this city's going to reap millions and millions and millions, if all we have to do is put a tax on it, we need to do that. I've seen no proof that that's, can be backed up by facts, you know? Alareta's wonderful in Arizona and Florida and whatever. I want to see the facts. I want to see what we can tax. I want to see some information. I don't want staff to drop it at this point. I think we have, we know that we have already authorized staff and the attorney for a ballot issue on the sales tax. And I think that staff, and I don't want it, I don't want it to compete to enhance hmm, different subject. To compete, it's dead. I'm really concerned, though. I'm just really, 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 really concerned. Where'd the attorney go that stood there and threatened us that if we don't put it on there, they're gonna work against the sales tax? And if they do something, that foolish cannabis is dead in this community, guarantee that. I think he, people shouldn't make those threats in public and then walk away from them. But I'd like to have more information. I really would.
I'd like that to include where the State Board of Equalization is going on this issue from a tax.
Yeah.
That's gonna override.
Well, we've also heard that the state's written the rules. We won't look at them. I'd like to see them. We also heard that we passed an ordinance and resolution last meeting. We did not. Somebody's still putting out bad information. And so I think that the hearing here is not on whether or not we're gonna have the use of cannabis, it's a tax. It's a tax only, and that's the only thing I'm willing to discuss, and that's what's on the agenda. And I would really request that if the council does reject, staff would look at that, consider the input that we have, give us some information, back it up with data, and I think that's what we need to do. We need to have as many facts as we can have.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. We actually, even though we were talking about taxes with the expert from HDL, in order to have that discussion, we needed some education about what are the options? And so part of the memo talks about some of those options. Obviously, right now, we have a complete ban. There is an option of licensing the delivery within Victorville's jurisdiction, meaning from delivery locations from outside of Victorville, essentially making it legal to deliver within Victorville. That doesn't bring any tax revenue, allowing that those, what he referred to as a non-retail delivery-location-only distribution to be housed in Victorville, but not have, you know, a walk-up, let's say, but allowing a delivery or series of delivery companies to operate from a location in Victorville doing deliveries only. Those have a very modest tax ability. And then next up would be retail dispensaries, where you have both the delivery and obviously a walk-in type of retail situation there. And then getting into both the cultivation and manufacturing and then potentially testing as well are all options that we can research further and bring back, you know, the more detailed information about what the taxability is of each one of those things. It was put into the memo simply as information, and again, it was very much a sort of shoot-from-the-hip based on, you know, several years of expertise working within California.
Well, as a point of clarification and a point of order, is there gonna be a formal vote? And I need clarification as to what will be coming back up in August 1st regarding the tax, whether it's cannabis or not.
There is no formal vote. I think what staff is looking for is a consensus based on council member, Mayor Pro Tem Cox's recommendation for more information supplemented by council member Kennedy's request for more information. I think we're looking for consensus. I've heard two people say they'd like that information to come back.
So those, those points of information mean they're going to be agendized, which means we take a vote?
At, that, right now, I'm looking for consensus. Usually, to direct staff, we just get a consensus, and I'm seeing two people that are in favor of staff bringing back more information. I think that's what staff is looking for.
So on August 1st, we will have more information on?
If staff can get it together by then, absolutely. Especially, again, I'm waiting for a consensus.
On tax, on cannabis, on...
What I heard Mayor Cox ask for is more information about basically all of the issues related to marijuana.
Yeah, I agree.
But we will prepare an agenda item to discuss all of the options before the council for a future ordinance that would obviously repeal our current ordinance, which is a ban, and then implement ultimately whatever the council decides. As part of that discussion, we'll attempt to quantify to the extent that we can what the potential revenue options or taxation options would be for each one of those things that I mentioned earlier. So that's my understanding of the direction that I've got.
Okay. I think I see a consensus. Do I see a consensus to that? Yes.
Yes.
We move on to public comments. Madam Clerk, read the statement, please.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of, of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Penal Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403.
Thank you. Okay, I do have some cards. The first one is Daniel Polly, and after him will be Craig Garcia.
Dan Repaul, that's, that's me.
Daniel, yes.
Hi, so good evening, mayor and council. I'm a Los Angeles native, born and raised in the state of California, attended Stanford University, spent the first 10, 12 years of my career in finance, the last five or six years in high-tech, and my third career is now starting a cannabis distribution company. That's one thing I haven't heard anybody on the council talk about is distributors and the role that distributors play in this. Without getting too far into the details, it is our job to move product all over the state and also to make sure that public safety and taxes are collected. So I'll be brief. I'll leave it at that. But we believe that commerce is the way forward as opposed to taxation. Thank you.
Craig Garcia. Craig Garcia.
Yeah, so that gentleman said right now, commerce is the way forward. But what I haven't heard from a lot of these folks talking about cannabis is competition. You're going to have competition from Hesperia, and especially from Adelanto. So I don't think they're factoring that in. But a couple of things I wanted to speak on, we touched on this earlier in the five o'clock, with regard to the respect for this chamber. There's a lot of people that came into your last meeting, your June meeting, that just tore this place apart. And I can't blame them completely, because there was no control from the dais. They have to respect, your city attorney clarified it to me that it was an open session, so they could say virtually anything they wanted, any way they wanted it for any amount of time. So that clarifies it. But it doesn't give them Clark Podge to come in here and disrespect you people, especially threatening your jobs. That was terrible. But there are decorums and rules of order that these meetings have to abide by, and I think everybody that comes in here to make these public comments should respect the same thing. The last thing I want to mention is the question I had earlier in regards to Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Cox being recused from the motion on Green Tree. And it was explained to me by the city attorney that their associations made that rule that they had to be recused because of their associations. And I mentioned this early also, that Blanca Gomez has an association with the High Desert Cannabis folks. So I'm, I would ask the council to take it into consideration, discuss it amongst yourselves, that Blanca should be recused from any of these decisions you're making for cannabis, because her associations are with them prior to her election, and probably prior to the legalization of marijuana in California. Well, that's something they can take into consideration. I asked the city attorney, but you guys don't know to what degree she's associated with these folks. So there is a conflict there. I just, the council would have to take that up with them and the High Desert Cannabis Association, you know? But it's something I'm concerned with as a citizen, because she's sitting on your dais. I volunteer for the juvenile probation department, so I'm going to take the liberty and speak for a lot of kids here in the city of Victorville. You've got over a third of the kid, over a third of our population is 19 or younger, so they can't vote. They don't have a voice. You guys are talking about cannabis, and you're, gosh, thirty years ago, this wouldn't have happened.
Three minutes.
So for the kids, think about them. Think about what message we're sending them.
Thank you. Mark Crefield or Greifield?
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and council members. My name is Mark Crefield, and I'm the new president and chief executive officer of the Victor Valley Chamber, and I just wanted to come tonight and formally introduce myself to city council and to city staff. I moved down here from Northern California, where I was the executive director of the Citrus Heights Chamber. I have one month shy of 10 years in the chamber industry. We're very excited to be here in the Victor Valley area. We bought a home in Victorville. We're all moved in. We're nowhere near unpacked, so that'll probably take a little while. But I just wanted to come tonight and just thank you and thank the community. Everyone has been wonderful since we've been here, and we are so happy to be here, and I'm excited to perform in my duties as the president of the Victor Valley Chamber, the regional voice of business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I have Marie Upoli.
On the Fourth of July, I attended the fireworks display provided by the city of Victorville at the fairgrounds. The entertainment was billed as the Life Church. They had an excellent band, and the fireworks were all that I hoped for. Thank you. What I'd like to talk about was the context and content of the entertainment. All of the songs were in praise of Jesus Christ. In between the songs, the pastor extolled the virtues of Christ and his ability to save our lives. It began to sound like an old-time tent revival. The pastor stopped just short of asking people to come down as believers in Jesus Christ. This was totally inappropriate on several levels. A Fourth of July celebration is to remember the founding of our nation. Many lives were lost during the Revolution War. It took great courage for, to bring about the founding of our nation. It is significant that no particular religious belief was required in the war. In fact, many fled to the New World in order to avoid religious persecution, wanting to practice their beliefs freely. The Amendment of the United States Constitution says that Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. For the city of Victorville, a government entity, to put on this an event that solely features Christianity goes against the principle of the First Amendment. And this event is definitely favoring one religion over another. But I want to further say that religion has no place at all in a celebration of our nation's founding. I've heard various patriotic songs, marching tunes, spiritual songs, even the All-American Beach Boys at, played at Fourth of July festivals before, but I've never heard Christianity being promoted. And that's because all of those other events that I've attended understood that the Fourth of July is all about the good old US of A, not religion. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, and those are all the cards that I have. So there is no other business before the council, so this meeting is adjourned.
Madam Mayor, before you adjourn, I know that we don't have council and city manager comments, but I feel a need to make a comment about that last speaker.
Yes, go ahead.
Specifically, if I might. The city pays for the fireworks. The city does not pay for any of the entertainment, and I'm not aware that we're even involved in that side of it. And I'm, again, I'm shooting from the hip a little bit, but my belief is that the city paid for the fireworks, and then the fairgrounds, actually, which is a state agency, coordinates all of the extra activities that are there. So they make their revenues through, you know, the water sales or whatever else is there. I haven't been to the fireworks show in a while, because I don't like sitting in a parking lot for two hours. But I'm going to research that to find out how that decision was made, because to my understanding, the city wasn't involved at all in booking the entertainment. So if that's the case, we may need to, in future years, make it clear to the fairgrounds that if the city is providing funding, that those protections need to be upheld, because the city shouldn't be associated with that. And that's coming from someone who they rely on. If we don't have a pastor come up, I give the invocation. I'm a Christian man, but I firmly believe in the separation of church and state as well. So I'll research that and get that back to the council in a memo format, and make sure that the public's made aware as well, because I, that shocks me. I'll just say that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and meeting is adjourned.